Call this regular school committee meeting to order January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Ms. Reynolds, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No executive session at this time. School committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource committee met on November twenty-ninth, and we went over donations from Mr. Roach. We were given an enrollment update by Mr. Packet. We have our current school choice students, as of ten-one, was one hundred and seventy-seven students who have come in, and three hundred and sixty-one are going out to other communities. We talked about different position considerations. Positions we are looking to add to the general budget are an ETL and a moderate special education, Unit A for South Street Childhood Campus. This is based on the needs of the current enrollment. One would be a point-five teacher, and the other would be a point-five ETL teacher, based on the classrooms. We have a ten-month clerical at McKay Campus because the secretary at Pittsburgh State University resigned, and we will be picking that position up in our budget, and there will be a reduction in the McKay budget that'll take place. We also talked about the need for increased security in the halls of the middle schools and the high school. We are going to add an additional security parrot at the Long Joe Memorial and FHS with adjusted hours to cover after-school activities. We would like to discuss, and we will be discussing, e-payment process, and Mr. Roach will have more information on that. Any questions?
Would you please repeat the numbers coming in and going out? Would you please repeat the numbers of students coming in and going out of Pittsburgh schools?
Hundred and seventy-seven students have come in, and three hundred and sixty-one going out.
That's what I had, thank you.
School building needs, Mr. Stevens.
School building needs, we met on December thirteenth. Mr. Roach gave us, we are required by financial approval for schematic design for the doors and window projects. This will be submitted to the MSBA and will not be accepting any accelerated projects for two thousand and twenty-three. We did receive three bids from contractors. The lowest bid did qualify. We did interview for an OPM, and we selected NV five. The Crocker Elementary School OPM process review interviews are scheduled for December fifteenth, which we did, we did, and that was the NV five was selected. I did receive complaints from parents about lighting at Long Joe and Ringle. Mr. Richardson has taken care of this submitted work audit, and that has been being taken care of. I also met with Dr. Knight and Mr. Richardson at Woodbridge Academy, and we went through the building, and Mr. Richardson looked at what projects could get done, and he will making a list, and will be working on some of those projects to get them done for the next school year, and anything that he can get done now, he will.
Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. Policy committee, Mr. Horgid's notified me, he's not going to be here tonight, he's not feeling well, and there is nothing to offer from the policy committee. Student support committee. Dr. Knight.
You're muted.
She can't, doesn't look like she can, she's in past, maybe. Yeah.
All right. School personnel subcommittee, nothing to report at this time, nor the executive committee. Now we're into the category of student representatives.
Yes, so before we introduce the new student representative, one of whom is here tonight, I'd like to thank and recognize the two student representatives who have been with us for the last year, Frank Gallo IV and Tia Gopal. So I'd like to just come up and give you the, your treasured nameplate here that you can take with you in your next step in your journey.
Thank you. I have a few words, sort of, as a reflection. So as you well know, this is my final sort of report of my term as a student representative to the school committee, and I have to say it's been an excellent experience. It has shaped who I am today. Even though the time was short, the impacts were large, and I would like to take a moment to sort of reflect on the triumphs and areas of improvement that still remain over a year of repping. When I first sat on the bench, when me and Tia first took our places last year, our school was in a period of unprecedented discord. Not only were we undergoing the pandemic in full force and attempting to recover from it, we also experienced a co-catastrophe, a chronic lack of hope. Students at FHS and throughout the public school system, regardless of grade, faced teacher shortages, behavioral issues, and a persistent mental health crisis. During this past year, with the help of the school committee, Pittsburgh Public Schools successfully transitioned from out of that pandemic mentality of pessimism into recovery. Pittsburgh High School in this year is visibly more optimistic, if only anecdotally. We have opened the bathrooms with the consistent help of the school committee and the diligence of our school staff, and resumed a program where teachers can act as substitutes so students can spend their whole day in class. Additionally, water bottle refilling stations, if you remember that from slightly earlier in the year, have been installed in the school and are widely used, and are keeping students healthy. Furthermore, this past year was enormously consequential for the field of student representation as a whole statewide. Prior to two thousand and twenty-two, no state-level organization equivalent to MASC, of which most of you are members, existed to unite student representatives to the respective school committees in the pursuit of favorable policy. Now such an organization exists, and both Tia and I are participants. It's called Mazer. You guys have, I've spoken about it before, and we are beginning to advocate for such changes as student representative voting rights and comprehensive financial literacy for everyone in the state. On Beacon Hill, there's some preliminary notions that we may get a bill filed in the State House in the next couple of months. Although there have been many strides made this year, there's still much work to be done in order for the, for student government of Pittsburgh High School to reach its full potential. Our student government lacks foundational documents to define its role. A well-written student constitution composed by youth leaders in schools is essential for the smooth operation of student representation in the future. Additionally, and most importantly, perhaps most importantly of everything I've said in my entire term, we must not let the undue influence of adult leadership corrupt the student voice. The successful model of student representation is a model in which students are free to express their opinions independently of adult influence. It is essential for the continued health of our school democracy that our student leadership answers to one body and one body alone, their fellow students. Thank you for working with me very much. Best of luck to the new reps, and have a very happy new year.
May I have a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you for your, all your work.
I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity, and I'm glad that I had the pleasure to meet all the school committee members. I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Roach and the superintendent. It wouldn't have been possible without you guys for recognizing my talent for public speaking, otherwise I wouldn't have gotten this wonderful position. This position has allowed me to realize my strength of public speaking and advocacy for others, and this is something I hope to pursue. Also, I'd like to give a special thanks to Dr. Knight, who has helped me advocate for students and staff at Pittsburgh High. Thank you so much, and I'm glad that I had this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and succeeding Frank and Tia, tonight we have one of the new members present, Zoe Graham, and Cheyenne Torado could not be with us tonight. So Cheyenne, want to introduce yourself to the school committee and the community here?
Good afternoon, fellow city council members. It is such a pleasure and honor to be here as a student representative sitting in front of you today. Before going any further with my presentation, I would like to take the time to formally introduce myself, so you will be able to know and understand me as your new student rep. For those who do not know, my name is Zoe Graham, and I am a current member of the Pittsburgh High School junior class. Some things to know about me is I am the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Vice President. I am the proud leader of the school's Black Student Union, and in my free time, I love to read and expand my mind on current social issues. I am here today because I was appointed by both my principal and vice principal, Ms. Jarrett and Mrs. Leva, to participate in these meetings and speak on current events and issues taking place, not only within Pittsburgh High, but within the entire Pittsburgh School District. Tonight, I will be focusing on just FHS, though. Some important events that I'd like to go over with you today include the acceptance of numerous high school seniors into Pittsburgh State University, the availability of after-school tutoring for those struggling with classes, career chats, the Holiday Fair along with annual door decorating contest, the pirandas, and the new topics discussed during the school improvement committee meeting. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Three seniors who have been accepted into Pittsburgh State University and Mount Waukesha Community College on the annual decision day, as well as the ninety-two seniors who received the Abigail Adams Scholarship for their outstanding MCAS performance. Congratulations. It is a huge accomplishment, and I wish you all the best as you move forward with your college journeys. Next, on December nineteenth, new tutoring opportunities became available for Pittsburgh High School students. As Tia Gopal so pleasantly stated during the last council meeting, all students, whether that be struggling students or not, are in need of extra help when it comes to their classes. Many students work extremely hard to achieve good grades, and sometimes it is hard for them, hard for students to accomplish this. By providing extra help and tutoring, students are able to not only feel better, but do better when it comes to excelling within the classroom. In addition, GEARUP also provided students on December seventh with the opportunity to participate in career chats. Career chats was an event hosted in which six professionals from different fields of work came and spoke with students interested in that specific career. They had entrepreneurs, acquisition associates, real estate agents, the captain at the Pittsburgh Fire Department, contractors, and army recruiters come in and speak about their experiences in their field. Next, the Step Up to Excellence Sophomore Induction Dinner also took place throughout the month of December. For those unaware, the Step Up to Excellence Program is a program aiming to help underprivileged kids build their college resumes and experience a mentor-mentee relationship. On December eighth, we had a dinner to celebrate the five newly selected sophomores on their acceptance into the program, while also highlighting the experience of current juniors in the program and their endeavors so far. Pittsburgh High School students and teachers also participated in the annual door decorating contest. The theme this year was Winter Wonderland, and it was very fun activity for all classes to participate in on their last week of school before winter break. It allowed students to grow closer with their classmates and teachers while also connecting with the competitive spirit all us Red Raiders love to pitch into. Along with this, on December twenty-third, we also took part in the Holiday Fair. The Holiday Fair is a super gratifying experience for the FHS community because student council members, clubs, and other groups within the school are able to set up tables and sell items like raffles, pictures with Santa, and much more. The Pirandas also took place as well on December twenty-third. The Pirandas is a Puerto Rican Christmas Eve tradition in which family members and friends get together and sing common Christmas carols and enjoy their time together. On this day, one of our amazing teachers here at FHS, Mrs. Rivera, and the multicultural club went around the school singing Spanish Christmas carols. This definitely aroused the students and school as a whole, and had every kid singing along, dancing in the halls, and feeling super lost in the holiday spirit. Lastly, on January fifth, our school improvement council met and touched on the following topics: facility changes, social-emotional improvements, and increases in academic opportunities. In terms of facilities, new dual enrollment rooms will be added in order to accommodate for students and professors who are in need of professional and vital learning environments. A new clinician will also be added onto the Pittsburgh High School staff, in which there will now be five total FHS clinicians to help provide aid to students in need of social, emotional, and mental assistance. On top of this, Pittsburgh High is partnering with Monty Tech. With this partnership, FHS students are permitted the opportunity to take classes in home carpentry and electrical. That program would start in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Finally, thank you all so much for listening and taking the time to understand the culture and events taking place inside of our astonishing school, Pittsburgh High. We are so excited to continue our journey here as your new two thousand and twenty-three representatives.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Prove the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made, seconded to approve the minutes of the meeting from December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Thank you. Communications, I don't believe the chair has no communications to make at this time. Public comment period. Public comments are no more than five minutes in length, may be submitted to the superintendent via email. Anyone wishing to make public comment, please go to the center of our room. Thank you.
Jacqueline Wechi, Pittsburgh resident, speaking on agenda item number eight, Teacher Diversification Pilot Program. This ninety-five thousand, seventy-eight-dollar grant should be used for real change, not an incrementalist approach, where you pay out-of-town consultants and hope for change down the road. I suggest a few things. Number one, while the school website says that candidates from diverse backgrounds with experience in an urban setting are encouraged to apply, this statement isn't included in your school spring job listings, it should be. Number two, instead of passively waiting for diverse candidates to apply, you should be actively recruiting. I attended a college where the student body was majority, minority, and the employees majority white. Everyone agreed this should be changed, so we successfully altered the college's workforce rapidly, without consultants, grants, or headhunters. The best way to do this is through word of mouth. Have you ever sent a letter home to families when there is an opening, asking them to recommend candidates from anywhere in the U.S., including Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, and other territories? There is a great demand for educators of color, so you may have to look outside the immediate area. You can use this grant to fly people in for interviews and assist them with relocation expenses. Number three, the more diverse your workforce becomes, the easier it will be to recruit additional diverse candidates. They will see that they are not just a token, but that the district truly welcomes many people of different backgrounds. It is especially critical that the administration be diversified, because this sends the message that we don't just want people of color to work here, but we are willing to share power with them. The criterion should not be who the mayor or administrators feel accustomed to working with, because that reinforces your current power structure. It shouldn't be about you and your comfort zone, it should be about the children and what's best for them. Number four, some people say that focusing on diversity will lower the quality of the candidate pool. This is absolutely not true. Qualified persons of color exist for every position in the schools, but you have to work to find them. For instance, at my college, we had always recruited French professors from France, but when an opening came up, we thought Haiti is a French-speaking country, and we found a great professor from there who chaired the Modern Languages Department for many years. Think outside the box. Number five, however, simply waiting for openings to occur will not be enough to get timely change. While you wait, more generations of children will pass through the system, interacting with few if any school employees who are representative of the student body. So the final step is to get white people to voluntarily share power. My father taught at the college I attended, and he chose to take a step down from tenured full professor to a support role, making way for an excellent woman from Barbados, who not only brought racial diversity, but also introduced new courses like social history that had not been taught there before. Later, the chair of the department, another white man, stepped down to become a regular professor, making way for another stellar woman, this one from Puerto Rico, to join the department in a leadership role. Faculty and staff in some other departments moved to other institutions to make room. If you can't get people to step aside for diverse candidates, you can use some of the ninety-five thousand, seventy-eight dollars for contract buyouts and early retirement packages. Given his record of removing administrators of color from the school system, you should start by replacing the superintendent. You can diversify the school system, and you can do it fairly quickly, but it takes a stronger commitment than this administration has been willing to make. It takes the moral courage to sacrifice your own self-interest for the benefit of our children. You can't buy that with grants or consultants. It has to come from your heart.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, moving on. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have a special guest here from the, two special guests here from North Central Mass Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we have Roy Nascimento, president and CEO, and along with Roy is Terry Young. And they're here tonight to talk about the workforce study that was recently completed by the Donahue Institute for North Central Mass. And the reason why I invited the chamber here tonight is they're, they're looking at having, making sure that the workforce of the future is known to all stakeholders. Public schools are a key part of helping that workforce for the future and leaders and where the students go immediately to career or go to college and come back. There's a lot of opportunity here in North Central Mass, and Roy, I'll have you take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and I want to thank the school committee and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for inviting us to present today on this study. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and the members of your team. I think we have a presentation, if we could have it pulled up.
Waiting for them to change over the screen, so.
So in the meantime, I'm going to get started. So in the meantime, I'm going to get started. So my name again is Roy Nascimento, I'm president of the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce. As the superintendent mentioned, Terry Young, who's our manager of talent and education initiatives, is here today. This is a new position, and we're very excited to have Terry on our team. This position is really focused on really being a liaison among the business community with our schools, as well as helping engage employers and the schools together so we can move forward and help students throughout the region. So I want to start off with the why, you know, why did we do this study? And this is a copy of the study, you can see the study, and it was conducted by the UMass Donahue Institute. The reason why we conducted this study is because it's no secret, everyone is really struggling right now. Employers are struggling, trying to find qualified, skilled workers. It's not only private sector employers, I know the school departments throughout the region are also struggling, trying to find teachers and other professionals, and throughout every industry, every company, you know, they're, they're struggling to find qualified, skilled workers. It's not just an issue here in North Central Massachusetts, it's a statewide issue, it's a national issue. A lot of this is being driven by demographics, specifically the aging of our population. So it's a problem not just here in Massachusetts and here in North Central Massachusetts, it's a little bit more acute here in North Central Massachusetts because our population is slightly older, and we're seeing our population retiring. I think the, the statistic we have up here, by two thousand and forty, as much as twenty-seven percent of the population here in North Central Massachusetts is going to be retirement age. That's from about ten percent, a little, little over ten percent in two thousand and ten. So that has significant implications for our workforce. We're going to see a lot of people aging out of the workforce, retiring, we're going to see a lot of shortages. So that's the reason why we were concerned. We know this problem is just going to get worse. We went to the UMass Donahue Institute, we asked them, we commissioned the study and asked them to take a look at this, look at the data, help us understand the labor market here in North Central Massachusetts. And more importantly, we wanted solutions. We wanted, we wanted solutions to help grow our labor market here in the future, to help employers and help our region advance. We know, we don't want to just stick our heads in the sand and just ignore the issue. We know as a region, for us to be competitive, for us to advance, we need to find these solutions. So I'm going to turn it over to Terry, who's going to go over some of the key findings and look at some of the data, and then I'll come back up in a few minutes and talk some more.
Thank you, Roy, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share these findings with you. So some of the key findings from the study show that North Central Massachusetts is more prone to labor force shrinkage due to the aging population, along with a little to no population growth, and we will feel future demographic pressures on the labor force more acutely than many other parts of the state. As we know, college is increasingly expensive, and there's historical overemphasis on college prep at the high school level. The imbalance of education between the trades and four-year degrees will carry forward. The pipeline bringing young people into the local labor force is ill-defined. It was found that the labor force participation rates differ by race, age, and education attainment. There is a lack of mentoring that can help guide people early in their careers that are local and in-demand. Another factor is companies' adherence to strict measurements of skills such as degrees and certifications. And finally, it is difficult to educate for an economy that is actively evolving. Yes, excellent, thank you. So this first graph and the next few slides will really help provide a visual context to the information that will be further described in the slide, so I'm not going to spend a great deal of time on, on these graphs. But this population growth change shows here that by using the same scale with each starting at the same place in two thousand and ten, that it's comparing regional projections to the state overall. The North Central Region is projected to decline in population as shown by the lower line. And then while the state overall is projected to experience continued growth, it has slowed growth out to two thousand and fifty. Thank you. So this is a share of total population by employment status. This is a breakdown of employment status by race, which shows the total population that are either in the labor force, not in the labor force, institutionalized, or in active military. Yes, thank you. Another factor to consider when looking at labor force participation rate is different levels of education attainment, and this shows who has bachelor's degrees or higher. High school with some college and less than high school.
Excuse me, but it's so tiny, I can't read that. Could you read across the bottom there?
Yes, and so the first graph, it shows with the white population, how many have bachelors or higher, which is thirty-
Does that boost higher?
Yes. And then some high, high school with some college is in the green, and then less than high school is the lower margin. And then it goes white, black, Asian, and Hispanic. Was that helpful?
Yes, I, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, they can be small, hard to read. Okay, so the next slide is labor force participation rate by age. If we look at the rate by age group, we can see considerable variations showing that the overall labor force participation rate for North Central Massachusetts by age is lower than the state overall. And then the next slide shows a projected labor force for the North Central Region. It's similar to the population rate. The overall labor force is expected to decline as well. These projections can give us an idea of what the labor force in the region might look like, given time, and these projected changes in demographics shed light on why some of these changes are happening in our region. And I'm going to have you leave that graph up as I turn it back over to- up as I turn it back over to Roy, so he can finish off.
Thank you, Terry. So this slide is a really powerful slide. It's a projection that UMass Donahue Institute did, projecting out our labor force. Prior to 2010, it's not on there, but the labor force was increasing and continuing to increase through 2020. And as you can see, now it's projected to go down because of retirements. You know, we're seeing a lot of baby boomers retiring, and they're making up a bulk of our, of our labor market. And you can see it goes down. It's projected to go down to 136,000. That's the labor force by 2050. So within, within the next 20 years or so, you know, we're going to see about 20,000 people leave the labor market here in North Central Massachusetts, which is really pretty staggering. And again, speaks to that issue that we're concerned about here in the region. Next slide, please. So this next slide, really to frame the issue and to help, you know, segment out, you know, different elements of our population, different elements of the workers that are out there, the UMass Donahue Institute team really categorized workers into two different categories, which you see here on this slide. Hidden workers, which we're really not going to talk about too much tonight. The study does talk a lot about hidden workers. But I'm primarily going to focus on future workers, because I think that's more relevant to the School Committee and to administrators and the work that you do. So we're primarily going to talk about future workers. But I'm going to touch briefly on hidden workers. So you see up there, hidden workers. Hidden workers are, could be folks with disabilities, veterans, immigrants, refugees, people without diplomas or without education, people with a history of, without a history of employment, folks that were previously incarcerated. For whatever reason, they may not be fully working in the workforce, in the labor market. And then future workers. You know, these are families looking to relocate, could be retained locals, young professionals, remote workers, immigrants, refugees, young people not in education, employment, or training. And more importantly, that's relevant to you and the school systems, is youth, those under the age of 14. So, next slide, please. So, and this really talks about hidden workers. So you've got workers that maybe are working, but they're not working to their full capacity. Maybe they're not working full-time. They're just working part-time. But they want to work full-time and could work full-time if available, if there were availability, if there were opportunities available. Those are, that are missing from the labor market, those that have been unemployed for a while but are returning to the labor force and seeking unemployment. And then those that are completely out of the labor market, those that are not working and not seeking employment due to economic reasons. It could be that they're a caretaker for a young child. It could be, you know, whatever reason. And again, I think some of that, that previous chart graphic kind of illustrated that. Next slide. And then future workers, which is a little bit more relevant, I think, to the work that you do. And this includes young people, those that are under the age of 14, the zero-to-14 age range. Those are children who are not yet eligible to work because of their age. Or it could also be young people over the age of 14 who are not currently, you know, working because they're involved, they're, they're in school, right? Or in training. Future residents. This would involve people that may be attracted to the area. Obviously, we're a very affordable region when compared to Boston and Greater Boston. So folks relocating out here to North Central Massachusetts, if they relocate out here, they might be more apt to want to work out here. So that's a potential workforce. And then the future workforce. Since COVID-19, there's been a lot written about this. This has really changed the way we work and introduced remote work options. So there's, there's an opportunity, maybe for employers to potentially gain employees through remote work opportunities. Next slide. So when the study talks about kind of barriers to entering the workforce, entering the labor market, and it really categorizes it into these four different categories: geographic barriers, structural barriers, work-life balance barriers, and skills barriers. I'm primarily going to focus again on skills barriers, just because of time. And I think that's what's most relevant, what you want to hear today, given that you're the School Committee and focused on educating young people and developing skills. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the skills barriers that were identified, some of the challenges. This is stuff that you're living. This is in your world, so this shouldn't come as a surprise. I'm sure you hear this all the time. First off, colleges increasingly expensive, and there's a societal overemphasis on college prep at the high school level. Technical schools are also limited in capacity and cannot keep up with demand. We have several technical schools in our region that have a waiting list, and they're turning away students. And not, not every student, you know, some students need different modes of, of training and different modes of education, specifically a trade school. So we're turning away folks that could potentially, we need to increase that capacity. The pipeline bringing young people into the local, local labor force is ill-defined. The study also found that there's a lack of training within companies that allow current employees to advance. That's more on the employer's side. There's an adherence to strict measures of skills such as degrees of certification. Some employers are requiring these degrees and certifications, that's where they may not need it. And it's, it's limiting their labor pool. There's, there's an aging workforce, which we talked about, which may lack the latest skills despite the wealth of experience. And it's, and there's some future challenges as well. Like, it's difficult to educate for an economy that continues to actively innovate and evolve over time. And innovation is happening very, very quickly. And then there's this imbalance of education between the trades and four-year degree-type programs, and that's expected to carry forward. And of course, COVID-19, you know, that's really changed, changed our world since that's happened. And we don't know what the long-term impacts are going to be on students, on workers, on our employers over time. So, next slide. And these are some of the additional barriers to entering the workforce that I mentioned earlier. Again, I don't want to talk too much about them, but there are geographic barriers, transportation, housing, the structural barriers, perceived risk of being, of hiring justice-involved individuals that remains. There's automation and metric-based approaches that employers are using that are, that are filtering out candidates. So again, limiting their labor pool. There's implicit or explicit biased hiring. There's over-credentialement in some job postings and unnecessary requirements, again, that, that may deter candidates and limit the labor pool for, for employers. And there's this issue of the benefits cliff, which was new to me and that I learned about. But there's, there's the structure of some of our, our social service, social assistance programs are structured in a certain way, where they may discourage folks from advancing in their careers, because they may lose some of the benefits if they go on to education or on training. And, and so that is an issue as well. And then work-life balance, that we've heard about so much, and it's been written about, the, not everyone wants the nine-to-five anymore. There's, we're a very high-cost state, lack of things like childcare support, and then of course, COVID-19. Next slide. So really, we're really interested in, we're solutions. So we're looking for some recommendations. These are a few. There's a lot of recommendations in there. A lot of it isn't relevant to you. These are more geared towards the schools. First of all, employers, one of the recommendations was employers collaborating more with our K through 12 educational institutions to help really align the curriculum with what employers need and what industry needs nowadays, to help make, help students be successful once they graduate, either going on directly to a career or going on to college and a career. Things like career pathways, PTEC, work-based learning. And these things, I have to compliment the school system, because these are things I think Fitchburg is being a leader on in the region, is really developing those career pathways and some of these other initiatives. Collaborate with local colleges, high schools, vocational schools, to offer training or credentialing for current and future workforce. Things like the Chapter 74 After Dark. Again, Fitchburg is being innovative and being a leader here. I think, I know there's talk of collaborating with Monty Tech on an After Dark program. Expand career exploration opportunities for young people. Things like internships, career fairs, job shadowing, mentorships. We need to provide students with an introduction to different careers out there, so they can help, help them make decisions on the pathways that they need to make. Continue to coordinate with local institutions on breaking down skills barriers. Mass Hire, Community College, FSU. Create, promote, and expand programs which offer micro-credentialing. The Community College and FSU are doing some great things there. Offer student loan forgiveness programs. Offer paid training and education vouchers. It's more on the employer's side. And there needs to be a push for reforms in schools to prioritize students needing different modes of education. And then convening employers, local education institutions, discuss skills barriers. Employers and, and schools, and don't always talk. We need to have more engagement among both, both groups. And the next slide. So in conclusion, getting workers in the labor force has to be easier. Employers need to make it easier for people to come back to work. We need to be creative with flexible work hours, benefit packages, childcare support, transportation support. We need to continue the good work that's being done, and we need to expand that. Things like what Fitchburg is doing with, with the school department's doing with career pathways and the Chapter 74 program and the partnerships with the Community College, Early College. Those are great initiatives. North Central Massachusetts needs to add more businesses to the mix with K through 12 to more accurately address the content being done. So employers need to step up to the table as well and partner with our schools. That's one of the reasons why we brought Terry on, so we could have a liaison connecting employers to the schools. And the workforce challenge doesn't come with a one-size-fits-all solution. The long-term challenge, change to occur, everyone needs to be involved. We need the chamber at the table. We need employers at the table. We need the schools at the table. We need transportation at the table. Social services, nonprofits, higher education, legislators, workforce development workers, everyone needs to be at the table. We need a collective impact model. More youth need to access better hands-on experience in real-life situations. Again, more work-based learning, internships, career fairs, career exploration opportunities. And then wraparound services are needed, things like childcare, transportation barriers, closing those skills gaps, rewriting structural norms and accommodations for work-life balance. We need more of that. So there's, there was a lot in this study. It's, it's nearly 90 pages long. It is available on our website, which is at www.northcentralmass.com. Again, it's www.northcentralmass.com. There are a lot of recommendations. Really, again, we just mainly focused on the stuff that we thought was relevant to the School Committee and to the school systems. But in closing, I want to thank, again, the Superintendent for inviting me. I want to thank the School Committee for hearing us out, and thank you for your leadership. The school system here in Fitchburg has truly been a leader here regionally, adopting a lot of these types of programs, looking to partner with employers, and, which is great, and we'd love to see that continue. And we're here as a partner to see how we can make that happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm happy to take questions.
Questions?
Quick question.
Mr. Walsh.
Were you pleased with the results and/or surprised in terms of some of the solutions that they recommended?
So I guess I wasn't surprised. A lot of the data and the research they did really just validated what we already know, that there's a problem. I think a lot of the recommendations and solutions were, were good ones. And there were some, some surprises. Again, things like the benefits cliff. I didn't, I'd never heard of that term. I wasn't aware of that, that issue. So, but that is an issue, and that's something that our public policy leaders may need to address, so that we can get more people off the sidelines and into the labor market, because we really need to get people off the sidelines.
Mr. Stevens.
Roy, have you given this 90-page document to Monty Tech? And have you been working with them at all, where the employees, employers that are part of your organization, are they giving Monty Tech what their needs are? Is Monty Tech trying to change their curriculum to meet the needs of the vocational programs that are needed in North Central Massachusetts? And not send 90% of their kids to college?
Yeah. So I would say that Monty Tech does a great job in engaging employers. So, and I think that's one of the best practices that we'd recommend, that conventional schools, if you're not a trade school, you can still implement this practice of really engaging and hearing from employers. They have, they've set up advisory committees where they're meeting with different segments of employers around different trades, hearing from them what employers need, what industry needs, what's, what's relevant right now in the world for their students, so that they're, they're staying relevant. So I think they do a good job of engaging employers. If that, I believe that was your question.
Yeah, so that, you know, so that they can provide programs that are going to fit the employer's needs and change their programs to need it.
Correct.
And also, accept students who maybe want to go into that program, who may not always fit their criteria for entrance. But really work with students that want to go into the trades and make more of those positions available to them.
Well, we need more of those, we need more capacity, right? So we need more spots opening up for students.
Well, I don't know if it's need more slots to open. We have, Fitchburg can send 100 students per year. We may be sent 78 this year. We have 22 openings, but I guess our kids just didn't qualify to get in. So we need to make some way that we can get some of those openings to our Fitchburg students and get them in so they can get into trades. That's where I'm coming from.
That's been a thorny issue, Roy, the admissions policies of, given the fact that it's a public tech school. I think they're beginning to address it. Desi's had them addressing it now, but former Mayor Gardner was a staunch, staunchly opposed to their, their policies in admitting young folks. So I'm hoping, hoping that Desi takes a real hard look at that. Also, this is probably, probably from Ms. Young. On the Donahue Institute, more than you or Roy, it stated, little or no population growth. Is 1,200 people not significant enough? The census of 2020 showed a 1,200 individual increase in the population of the city of Fitchburg. Is that not significant enough?
I can't speak to that.
Is it little or no population growth?
I think it's, it's very little population growth, but I think what they were really referring to is the labor market. So not necessarily the population, but the labor force.
Okay.
So the labor force is going to decline, because even though you're seeing population growth, you're also seeing an aging population. So you're seeing people leave the labor market.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. You think it could be the amount of, the type of employment that are coming now versus what was 10, 15, 20 years ago? Could that be an issue in terms of preparing our kids for the labor market? Are we, are we missing, missing the mark? You know what I mean? Are we preparing a workforce that is outdated as opposed to moving forward?
Well, that's a good question. I, I think, as the report stated, you know, there's a lot of evolution happening. You know, there's a lot of technology and, and changing that's impacting our world. So it's, it's going to be a challenge to stay constantly relevant. But, you know, there's certainly, you know, I think the report talked about, you know, there's these expectations, family expectations, societal, societal expectations to go on to college, while we have a lot of trade openings and a need in the trades. So there's probably a lot of students that are, could benefit from different modes of education, maybe a trade school, but can't take benefit from that because of some of these capacity issues that are, that are taking place.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you about this report. Is this a report that the Chamber of Commerce requested of somebody to do?
Yes, we commissioned the UMass Donahue Institute for this report.
UMass Donahue?
Donahue, yes.
And who are they? Tell me a bit about them.
So the, the UMass Donahue Institute is, I believe, they are the Economic Development and Public Policy Research Arm of the President's Office, the UMass System. So they do a lot of these types of reports. Different groups can commission them to do these types of reports on, we've commissioned them to do other reports in the past.
And do you know who the group is made up of? I mean, was this, was this a class project? Who was on this, who was on this Donahue?
The Donahue Institute, yeah. So the project team.
Donahue Institute. It's called the Donahue Institute. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah. So the Donahue Institute had a project team. It was led by Dr. Brainer Stewart, and it was a number of researchers. So they're all.
I guess what I'm asking is, was this a, something, a class project that was, you know, taken on for a term?
No, no, it was done by.
Worked on by students?
No, there was no student involvement. It might have been a good idea to have student involvement, but this wasn't a class. It might have been a good idea to have student involvement, but this wasn't a class project. This was done by a research team.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike. Yes, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you for the report, really appreciate it. I know, skimming through it, there's some great recommendations around internship opportunities in schools. And I just want to ask, is healthcare and manufacturing still two of the leading job sectors in North Central Mass?
They are, yes. Actually, as part of our regional economic development plan, we identified four industries, priority industries, and the top two are healthcare and manufacturing.
Yeah.
So advanced manufacturing, and then we have a lot of small businesses and tourism are also priority industries, as well as logistics and transportation, because of changes in our economy, with these new Amazons of the world, they need more of these warehouses and kind of logistics operations.
That's great. And I know at Pittsburgh High, they have recently added an advanced manufacturing internship-based pathway with three great classrooms, and also looking to expand into environmental sciences as an area of sort of vocational, technical-type training, which would address some of those sort of technical aspects in building the workforce. So it's great, it really-
And you have a healthcare career path.
Healthcare pathway through early college as well. So I think Pittsburgh High has done a lot to try to address some of the recommendations that are coming from the chamber.
I would completely agree, and as I said before, Pittsburgh is really a leader regionally. Programs like that are exactly what we need. Manufacturing pathways, healthcare pathways, other industry pathways, early college, all of these initiatives help prepare these young men and women, either go directly into a career if they want, or college and then a career, which is what we want. And it's aligned with industry here, and the report talks about that. You don't want them, you want to help find the right path for them that's going to be aligned with what industry needs nowadays. You don't want them going to, moving out of the area because the industry that they studied for isn't here in the region. We want to retain them here in the region, right? So it talks a lot about that, and that is spot on. We're thrilled that the school's doing that, and we'd like more schools to be doing that, and we'd like Pittsburgh to be doing even more of that. Because that's what we need. That's exactly what the report validates. Those types of initiatives are really important.
Great, thank you. Mr.?
Yes, go ahead. So I guess just thinking back a little bit of the history of this region and Pittsburgh in particular, it used to be big paper mill town many years ago. And, you know, Pittsburgh and North Central Mass has evolved. Lomond used to be really big in plastics, right? And as we look at the workforce needs of the future and industry and technology is changing rapidly, and I was fortunate enough to go recently on the manufacturing tour and seeing really the high-tech manufacturing. This isn't, this is really clean manufacturing, too, whether it be at Devens or we're at a place in Lemonster and a place in Shirley on the tour. Just a couple of updates. This year, Pittsburgh High did add a guidance counselor focusing on college and career, and has been very active in terms of trying to expand the relationships that were started under Principal, former Principal Roach at Pittsburgh High School. You know, the dual enrollment, the pathways. Manufacturers recognize the need to bring on good talent. We want to create that with students who are critical thinkers. I'm just looking at our Department of Ed statistics on last year's graduates and self-reporting, 27% are going into the workforce out of high school. So that's one out of four. So we want to make sure if it's one out of four next year, that they're ready to dive into whatever industry can hopefully train them and have them with the good pay and benefits. Because I think one of the takeaways from that tour that I went on was, you can go into a lot of these companies and within a couple of years be making $50,000, $60,000. The companies are willing to train local graduates right out of high school. You know, it was mentioned a little bit earlier, in a couple of years, we hope to be working with Monty Tech on a pilot after-dark program for home carpentry and electrical. That would only be available for our juniors and seniors, I think, as the mayor said earlier. There are still kind of some structural issues in terms of their admission policies. Nevertheless, we're trying to provide our students opportunities. And, you know, Monty Tech and us, we'll be, actually, we have a couple of meetings this week, and the guidance counselor who I mentioned also has a meeting Wednesday with the Mass Hire folks about internship programs, you know, for the end of their senior year. So these are things that we're actively working on here in Pittsburgh and look forward to partnering with any companies that want to have conversations with us. So, thank you.
That's great.
Oh, Mr. Hughes.
So this kind of strikes a nerve in me, this conversation, because years ago, when Rich Mascherelli was a principal at Pittsburgh High School, we started a partnership with United Way and a number of manufacturing companies, and they came in with this dog and pony show about, you know, labor force and getting kids that were coming out of high school, getting them jobs, and, you know what I mean, meaningful employment, kids that weren't going to college, or they were going to college. And guess what? No employers followed through. So people know, right, who's serious and who's not. So I hope that when we talk about these partnerships, that the people that we serve, which is our students, right, we're preparing them for the workforce. So I hope that the workforce is not putting up, I think you spoke earlier, to barriers, unrealistic expectations, or overqualifications for their job and things like that, towards certain people. So we hope that that's not the case. I certainly would be concerned with that, because we started a program, we had 100 student interns, right? We put them all around the region. The Chamber helped us with that. And maybe five of them, you know what I mean, companies wouldn't even return their calls, wouldn't, you know. So the kids would go on, what is that all about? So I don't want to disappoint the kids. I don't want to disappoint the people that we're saying, hey, we need you, we're getting you ready, we're going to drill a college in your head, and then all of a sudden, they got to stay at home because they can't get a job. You know what I mean? So I want to make sure that we're making sure the employers know that. If we're going to do this, then we got to follow through and stop trying to, you know, just pull our kids along and just saying, well, we're going to do something, and we don't do it, we don't follow through. So I want to make sure that, you know, our employers know that. If we're going to say we're going to hire these people, then let's do that. Let's not put up barriers to hiring them or getting them involved. You know, let's make sure that we move all that, do our best to move all that stuff out of the way in these partnerships and have a meaningful conversation about this.
We would absolutely agree, you know, and that's why we're here today. That's why we commissioned this report. You could see that, pretty frank, there are barriers out there, and we're encouraging employers to consider those barriers and think creatively and be flexible. You know, and maybe traditionally, they want only full-time, or maybe not everyone can work full-time. Some people have childcare issues or whatnot, or maybe have transportation issues or whatnot. So we're encouraging employers to be flexible. I'm sorry you had a bad experience, but I think it's in the best interest of employers, quite frankly. Looking at the labor challenges that this region faces, this community faces, and not just here, but our entire country.
Right.
You know, this demographic challenge is not just here in Massachusetts, it's a nationwide issue. And employers have to be flexible, you know, and they have to be creative. And I would think most employers would want to work with the schools, because that's their future workforce.
Right.
And we're certainly encouraging employers to work with the schools. And, yeah, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Appreciate it. Thank you. You have a question, Rosemary?
I just wanted to say one thing. In all of our conversation about this, I did not hear a solid presentation of what we're going to teach the students to be prepared so that those employees will be happy to get them. And that's, we have to have a good, solid preparation of the students, and I didn't hear that aspect of it.
Yeah, I'm not an educator, I'm just a chamber guy. So, and this report was really meant to just be, you know, a thought piece, to really present some recommendations. We'd really be looking to the professionals, the educators, to develop those curriculums, working with businesses. And again, that's one of the things we're encouraging, is, you know, businesses need to have a seat at the table, should be working with our schools, helping our schools identify what is needed in real life, what's needed in the workplace, and we're happy to help engage employers and bring employers to the table.
Yeah, so just, many times, things are presented in parts, and a part is a part of a whole, the whole community. The community has to raise its standards and its preparedness and its knowledge and its usefulness, and the families have to be considered.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all I wanted to say, it's a part of a whole.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
This is my take on what you're saying. Wonderful stuff, but I come from the West Coast, and the West Coast, we start this stuff in junior high, which is middle school. And there's no reason we can't introduce the workforce to your seventh and eighth graders. Each quarter, they take a different class, you know? These kids today, do you guys know how to balance a checkbook?
Yes.
Okay, that's an awesome thing. Because kids today, I'm finding, don't know how to balance a checkbook. They don't know how to manage their money. We need to offer this stuff in junior high and get it started there. By the time they get to high school, high school can become Monty Tech Vocational. By the time they're done, four years, they know what they've done. That's just what I came up with.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have Ms. Pamela Rivers, our Nursing and Health Services Director here, to give annual update on what's going on on the nursing front here in Pittsburgh Public Schools.
Thank you. Good evening.
And Mr. Thompson has the slides.
Okay.
As soon as they're ready to go up, we go.
So while we're waiting for that, good evening. Happy New Year. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening on the Pittsburgh Public School Nursing and Health Services. As you heard, my name is Pamela Rivers. I am the Director of Nursing and Health Services for the Pittsburgh Public Schools. So it's without exception that we believe all students deserve to be healthy in both their mind and body. All students deserve to receive health care, to be educated in their health and in their health practices. So our focuses and objectives this evening are going to be how the Nursing and Health Services support, collaborate, educate, show initiatives, and successes. So a little picture of the framework for the 21st Century School Nurse Practice, the standards of practice. There are four areas that we're going to be focusing on that are part of this practice: care coordination, leadership, quality improvement, and public and community health. So this is for the families and the school community. And at the center of all of this, and the coordination is for the students, because it's most important to have the students healthy, safe, and certainly ready to learn. So we'll start with our supports and the readiness to learning. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we provide environments where we remove barriers. So any child, any student, regardless of health condition, is welcomed, and we will be able to work with the families, the schools, the students, the community, to provide opportunities for learning and growing. Some of the ways that we do that, right off the bat, is with our screenings. So you see the listing of the screenings here that are conducted within the schools, right away, remove barriers of any hearing issues, any vision issues. We work very hard with our health services, focusing on our return-to-class rate. Right now, I'm pleased to say we're 90% and growing higher than that where we've been in the past. What this is, is a child can be seen, their health needs can be met, they can be ready for returning to class, returning to learning and instruction. And this, in the end, saves instructional hours for them, it also saves time for their families, for working, be able to provide for the families and all. So nurses certainly work in collaboration. We look to participate and are invited to many of the different teams you'll see listed here. And with that said, the focuses for the students, the supports, are based on the whole child, to keep them healthy, safe, certainly challenged, engaged, and supported throughout. So our collaborations, ultra-important as well. Collaborations aren't just happening within our schools, but within our communities. And partnerships is extremely important. Partnerships to be evolved and happen ahead of time, not when something is in a situation and you're trying to, you know, build this. Relationships are so important. So there's collaborations with health and safety, our Safety Task Force, emergency services, emergency preparedness. Nurses will meet with our emergency services and coordinate things ahead of time, share best practices, and make sure that we're aligned and current. Certainly, the collaborations are with our health services and our programs there, not just within the schools, but within the community, and we'll be hearing about that collaboration a little bit later. Dental services, that's something that we partner with as well, through Mount Wachusett Community College, and also our community health connections and the programs and the services within our schools. Very pleased to share that the nurses are amazing as far as mentors to student nurses from Massachusetts colleges and universities. Right now, we are sharing the community and the path towards a school nursing track with not only our Northeastern University students, but also our Pittsburgh State students. And one of the ways that the Pittsburgh State is connected with the community through their last session was with a clothing drive. They understood that there was needs within the schools, they developed this clothing drive, and they're looking very excitedly to give back in sharing that community connection. The collaborations continue with agencies, healthcare partners, and not just within our city, but across the state, and certainly across the country in some ways. So education, we're clearly in an educational environment in the schools, but health education is foremost and ultra-important as well, because we need our students to understand their overall health, their overall mind and body health. We want them to be lifelong learners of healthy practices. We want them to not only be consumers of health, but also understanding maybe an acute illness they have, maybe a chronic condition, how to handle that. And there's multiple conversations that go on with the nurses and the other support personnel. So initiatives, initiatives are so important as well. We look to see continual offerings to provide our students and families. We do that for going after and achieving multiple health and education grants, and we've done that over the years. We look at technology offerings and how we can further that. You'll hear about and see as you have care coordination, you can't work in isolation, you have to coordinate the care and provide the best all around. One of these ways is moving forward, looking at data, providing telehealth services, so moving forward with this technology that we have. And then professional development, education. This is an ongoing thing. We want to stay current in our practices, up to date. There's, as we well know, multiple new health findings and management that needs to occur. And I will share that one of the initiatives that we had at the high school, Mr. Roach spoke about it, as far as the health services and all, but we had program, and I believe it's going to be reinstated, is the Certified Nursing Assistant Program with multiple members, graduates, they actually, you know, have their certificate, can go on and have true work that way, and then further their careers. So pleased to have that and support that further. So our nurses are amazing in their pursuits as well. And one of the things I want to recognize, it's been achieved by several of us and continued to be something acquired and achieved, is the awarding of the National Board for Certification of School Nurses. This is a nationally certified credentialing. It exemplifies a school nurse has passed rigorous natural credentialing process to validate practice competency based on professional standards. The board certification in school nursing, the specialty practice, is a formal recognition of advanced knowledge, competency- nursing, the specialty practice, is a formal recognition of advanced knowledge, competency, a professional commitment to excellence in the specialty practice of school nursing on behalf of better health and education of our schoolchildren. So just to speak of this commitment from our staff that I'm very proud of and pleased to represent. So furthering successes, we certainly have made things happen. We've advanced successes with our students' families, relationships building, continuing to build, various engagements within the schools, within the community, health fairs, other activities that go on, and offerings for them. We continually work towards care communication. The benefits and the connections are just ongoing. The participation in partnerships and health offerings, again, within our schools and within our communities. And with that, a couple of metrics to show this. So with the metrics in mind, these results show students' abilities, all students' ability to attend, to learning, attendance, and overall healthier outcomes. So first off is the case management communications and/or care coordination. So what this is, is a representation of the communication that the nurses have with parents and guardians, school staff, healthcare teams, community agencies. This can include home visits, attendance, primary care appointments, specialist appointments. This can happen in real brick-and-mortar settings, but it can also happen telehealth-wise. And as you'll see over the years, there has been ongoing communication. You'll note in last year, FY22, there was quite a little bump. And there was, you know, as a result of the pandemic and all, a lot of questions, a lot of health needs that were evolving. What was going on? What could we do to better our health? And I think that's representative right there. You know, if there ongoing education pursuit, supporting our students, educating them, and working with our families. One thing that's really important as well is the student feeling comfortable in their utilization of the healthcare services to further their health education, have these communications. So as you see, that as far as the percentages, is a range of 85 to 95% of the student bodies that visit the health offices, interact with the nurses at least once per year. Other metrics, we all know how important health coverage and health insurance can be, so we look to coordinate this also. And it's part of our community health, our public health. You can see where it's been over time. There's certainly multiple reasons why health insurance can be a challenge. I did look ahead for this year, and we're actually on target for the upper 70s, so we're coming back again with health insurance coverage. And I'm very pleased that the nurses also support this as well. Dental screenings, we heard about that. That's something that we have with our community partners in our schools. And you'll see these percentages of our student populations that participate in this, with their parents obviously signing off in agreement with that. You'll note in FY21, there was not any screenings at all, and that was just a measure. We didn't want to further the virus, so we were following protocols of not having others in. But as soon as that, you know, we resolved that, then we had ended this practice back in our schools, and we're right back up to where we were before. So a little bit of a review on our focuses and our outcomes. First up, we certainly focus on optimal health and well-being for all of our students. And that's that whole child, whole body experience. We focus on the student health, their readiness to learn, and by doing this, we support the attendance within the schools. The return to class rates are noted again, and how we compare across our state with Massachusetts. School health, school nurses, they indirectly promote achievement as well, and absolutely focus on connections, relationships, and furthering education. And we want to be recognizing our, the various cultures, the languages, the different groups that we have within our community. So we do that in also a culturally responsive way, and we look to focus on health and safety and supports throughout. This is the branding that you will see throughout our schools. The Pittsburgh School Nurses have worked on this together, so you'll see it within the schools, within the district. And I thank you very much, again, for allowing me to present, and I welcome any questions or comments.
Ms. Reynolds?
I'd just like to make a comment, that that was, that was very presentable. We could read it, we could follow you. The type was excellent. Yeah, so I thank you for making that.
Thank you.
Good numbers, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks again.
Okay. Next up, we have Days Cement of Nutrition Services. This is the Health and Nutrition Night here at the School Committee. So Mr. Thompson has his, your presentation.
Thank you, everybody. First, foremost, I always like to start off, I need to thank my amazing staff who make my job easier and who allow, who feed close to 4,000 lunches every day, who handle that, to allow us to come see you a couple times a year and update you on a few of the other things that we do. I know I last, I was last here in August, gave you an update on summer feeding and what we did. I'm going to talk briefly today about a few of the things we've done since the start of the school year, a few of the things we have in the works, and I know I'll probably be back later in the year. So I did want to touch briefly on community eligibility. The community eligibility provision is what allows us here in Pittsburgh to provide meals at no cost to students. I believe we have had that here in Pittsburgh for a little over 10 years now. We were just approved for another four-year cycle, so we are, have, are assured meals at no cost for students here in Pittsburgh through '25-'26. Again, CEP is a federally funded program that allows us to do that. Now, Massachusetts did pass legislation for the '22-'23 school year for all school districts in Massachusetts to do meals at no cost. However, that is year-to-year. There's no, there's nothing on the books for next year. However, Pittsburgh is assured that through at least '25-'26. And the reason I say '25-'26 is because we can reapply every year, and it just starts a new four-year cycle, and it's something we will continually do. One of my goals as Director is to ensure that the students of Pittsburgh continue to receive their meals at no cost. So at some point this year, we will reapply again with the hopes of extending another four-year cycle of that program. So, next slide. Update on some capital improvements that we have made in our department, and some that are in the works. A couple new roll-in style refrigerators at Memorial Middle School in Long Joe, new convection ovens at Pittsburgh High to replace some dated non-energy efficient ones. The new ones at Pittsburgh High School are Energy Star rated. Talk a little bit more about how we make our decisions on equipment in a moment. We did add a second combination oven steamer at Long Joe. For those who don't know, we are a little limited in our kitchen at Long Joe. There's an issue with the ventilation system that cropped up. God, looking back at Jill, maybe 12, 13 years ago. We don't have access to regular kitchen ventilation, so we have to use equipment that is not required to have ventilation, and combi ovens, as they're known, aren't required. So we actually added a second combi oven this year at Long Joe Middle School. Many of our other schools do have combi ovens. It's actually sort of, combi ovens are a preferred oven system that I'll talk about in a moment. There are some instances where we do have to use more traditional convection ovens, but for the most part, we are, have been transitioning to combi ovens. Reason for that in a second. One thing that didn't make the list, we did just replace all of the cafeterias at the New South Street Early Learning Center. So that was completed. A few projects in the planning stages, new walk-in freezer at Pittsburgh High School. We have really outgrown our storage space at Pittsburgh High School over the years. And then, we currently have an outdoor storage freezer at Crocker, and the clock is ticking on that because as part of the new projects, new Crocker School project, that freezer will eventually be decommissioned. So we're working on that. We're working on replacing some non-energy efficient, older steamer kettles, tilt skillets at Pittsburgh High that have been there since the school opened. Equipment that's that old, the energy efficiency is just not as good. So we're looking at adding another combi oven to Pittsburgh High School and a new skillet system that is much more energy efficient. And we are also looking at upgrading the serving line at Memorial Middle School from two serving lines to three, just to help some of the lines there. And we do have more cafeteria tables in the works. Pittsburgh High School, one school, all new tables going to be added to that cafeteria. Again, those tables are original to when the school opened. They're looking at by their age, so we're happy that those are going to be replaced at some point. I believe we're just waiting on them to come in.
Yeah.
Next slide. So some, the decisions that, you know, what goes into the decision-making for the equipment and things like that. First of all, all projects are fully funded through the Nutrition Services revolving account, through the revenues we generate, and through grants. There is zero cost to the Pittsburgh School's budget and/or city. It's all self-funded, again, through revenues we generate through our program, through the nutrition program and grants. So we're able to, you know, by managing the program fiscally responsibly, we're able to stay ahead and upgrade these, this equipment to stay ahead of it. And whenever we are purchasing or upgrading equipment, we always are doing it with energy consumption and sustainability in mind. Ovens, we're looking at Energy Star rated. Those combi ovens I mentioned, when we're able to use those in the kitchens, those use significantly less energy because they're what are called, those ovens are what they call on-demand ovens. So normally, classic kitchen setting, kitchen setting. Manager goes in, they're in there at 6:00, they fire up the ovens, they're on 350, 375 all day until they shut the kitchens down at 1:30. These newer combi ovens, on-demand, they heat up quickly, so they're not on consuming energy until about 10 minutes prior to when we need to cook something. Item comes out, they go into an idle mode where they're not consuming energy, something else goes in. So there's much less energy being consumed. So it's much better from energy consumption and sustainability standpoint. And all equipment upgrades across the board are made with this in mind. So, the slides, some of the pictures of brand, those are the brand-new convection ovens at Pittsburgh High School with the Energy Star rating. Again, there are some of our applications that still require a classic oven, you know, just from a food production standpoint.
Are those new ovens, are they gas or are they electric?
So depending on the school, the ones at the high school, our kitchen at the high school is a gas kitchen, so those are gas ovens. So high school and South Street are gas kitchens, the rest of our kitchens are all electric. So that has to be taken into consideration when we're upgrading equipment. So, the, on the left, that is an example of the combi oven that I talked about. That oven acts as a standard kitchen oven, or a steamer, or both. So there are some cooking applications where it's what we call adding a touch of steam to some of our cooking applications to help keep, you know, certain items. It keeps it moist while it's cooking and things like that. It's sort of the new wave in cooking in kitchen, I shouldn't say new wave, they've been around for years, but they're becoming more and more, used more and more widely in restaurants as well as school kitchens. And on the left, that's the new refrigerator for Long Joe that we just had installed. Next slide. Long Joe, we needed a three-door refrigerator, but we couldn't get it in the building. Fortunately, we did take plenty of measurements prior to, and it wasn't a situation where we purchased it, they showed up and couldn't get it in. We, you know, lessons learned from years ago, we sent the, we went for the quote, they came out just to double-check the measurements, and we couldn't fit the three-door in the door. So we had, ended up with a two-door and a one-door instead, but, you know, that's what we do. So that was, that's it on the equipment for, for what we've done year-to-date and what we have coming up. We did do a food waste study back in December. We conducted it at Pittsburgh High. USDA school meal regulations require, do require a certain number and types of food be taken by students in order for us to count it as reimbursable. The rules are what they are. I mean, we have to ensure kids take a certain amount of items, even if they don't necessarily want them.
Even if they don't eat it?
Even if they don't eat it. So, I mean, our job, my job, Joe Lucius's job, is to make sure we find things that they do want.
And this is the, this infinite wisdom of the federal government that determines that?
So, for example, a student has to have a fruit or a vegetable on their tray. On paper, sounds great, we want to make sure they have their fruits and vegetables, but if a student just says, "I don't want it," we tell them, "Just take it." You know, maybe share the apple with a friend, put it in your backpack, have a pleasure.
Don't you explain to them, Dave, that we need those numbers?
Well, no, we explain it to them that it is important, because it's very important to eat your fruits and vegetables.
This might be, this is probably the good time to bring this up.
Yeah.
And it's probably dated, Dave. A few years back, I was told that we give out milk, cartons of milk.
Milk is an option at lunch.
And then a parent contacted me and said, "You observe them just throwing the milk carton, complete, full, unopened, in the trash."
It happens.
So we don't ask them if they want a milk?
We do. There is a misconception out there that students have to take milk with their meal. They do not. There are a minimum number of components. But there, but we run into misconceptions, miscommunications where, you know, we all have folks help us, and we love when folks help us, who maybe not, don't work for the Nutrition Services Office, teachers and parents, and like, "Take a milk, have to take a milk, have to take a milk." We're like, "No, no, they don't have to take a milk, because we don't want kids taking food they're just going to throw away."
Right.
But there is a minimum they have to take. So, but we do these plate waste studies to kind of get an idea, what, you know, what is it that we're wasting? You know, we do these studies to help educate students in making appropriate meal choices. We do to see, do we need to make changes? Are there things we're serving? Because we do a lot of our analysis based on what the students take, but if it ends up in the trash, how can I analyze that? So we do these studies to see, okay, wow, we thought they really liked this because they take it. Turns out they're taking it because they have to, and they're just throwing it away. So we do, and we do these waste studies to determine that. And we do to find ways to minimize food waste and provide data, not date, that's a typo, I apologize, provide data to USDA, USDA on changes to regulations that might be needed. So we do give feedback to USDA when school lunch regulations do come up for reauthorization, so we can tell them, "Listen, we know you had great intentions with these rules. They're not working out right. Can we tweak them?" Every, things like that. So, we do want to minimize as much food waste as possible. I mean, there is going to be some large-scale food productions, like a school district of our size, there is going to be some. But our goal is to reduce it as much as possible. And conducting plate waste studies like these, it's just one of the many tools in our arsenal to, to help reduce waste as much as possible. Just from, not only, I mean, cost-saving is a reason, of course, but I was taught, don't waste food, and that's something, you know, we take very seriously. We don't want to waste food. So, we have to use all these different things to make sure we're not doing that. So, next slide, just some pictures from the plate waste study we did. We actually, you know, measure milk and weigh it and see it, see just how much, just how much food was thrown away that day. So, next slide. Breakfast. I wanted to talk a little bit about breakfast. We do, our lunch numbers are great. We serve close to 85% of the enrollment of Pittsburgh Public Schools for lunch each day. But breakfast, we run into some issues. Breakfast participation has always been a challenge. We do continue to innovate to find ways for students to have easy access to breakfast. We do. Myself and my Assistant Director Nancy and our Food Service Manager Jill, we meet constantly to come up with innovative ways to find, to make it easy for students to get a breakfast in their hand. Now, we have made some great progress. School year '21-'22 versus year-to-date '21-'22 through year-to-date '22-'23, our breakfast is up 35.7%. We're serving about 500 more breakfasts per day than we did last year. Sounds great, however, we're only serving, we go to the next slide, 34% of enrolled students in Pittsburgh schools are getting a breakfast each day. So why is that? Now, obviously, there are some, there's kids eating breakfast at home, there's no doubt about that. But there's a lot of roadblocks that we face. And, you know, we work with each of the schools to try to make it as easy as possible for students to get breakfast, because a hungry student cannot learn. And some of the roadblocks we face, limited choices for sure. With the number of students we are serving and want to try to serve, it does limit us on options, because it's a short amount of time to feed kids. As much as I would like to feed every kid, you know, scrambled eggs and toast, and that takes time. And we're serving thousands of kids in a very short amount of time. And in doing so, the options are limited. But we do monitor trends, review menus, to ensure we're offering items that the students like. There are some other roadblocks we face, though, that, you know, we do have to work on as a district as a whole. A lot of times, breakfast is seen as an inconvenience to the school day. This perception needs to stop. This is, you know, my soapbox here. Just the delay we had just the other day, we actually had a staff member request that an announcement go out. that an announcement go out that breakfast was canceled. We cannot do that. Massachusetts has legislation that says districts such as Fitchburg are required to offer breakfast each and every day, but it just goes to show that, the misconceptions about the program and, and breakfast and whatnot. Also, too, you know, the messaging we send, that we want, you know, food insecurity is very real in Fitchburg. There are families that rely on what we provide each and every day. And then when a student who we've been trying to get that message due comes in and is told, "No breakfast for you today, get to class," that's, that takes a long time for us to build that trust back. So those are, those are perceptions and, and communication and whatnot, that I'm trying to work with school administrators, that we can't do that. Breakfast needs to be, it needs to be made important and an important part of the day. We do run into issues with restrictions on meal consumption locations. Many schools do restrict it to the cafeteria for various reasons, and they give us the reasons, but they allow other food to be consumed in the classroom. Non-traditional breakfast service is very common in other districts. So I do get a little frustrated when I hear, "Nope, we can't allow kids to take the breakfast at the classroom," yet we see holiday parties, food just parading into the classroom. So, you know, and things like that. Outside competition is tough. You know, we, we do have to compete with the likes of the Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's of the world, but they have a different set of rules. We're required to be, we're required to serve fruit and vegetables and, and, you know, offer milk. They have no rules. They can basically serve whatever they want. And that's a diff, and, and so it's a difficult thing to compete with sometimes. So. Parent guardian education, we are working on some marketing materials to make sure parents know breakfast is available at no cost. There's no doubt that there are probably some families out there that don't know. Convenience of service, this is one that we struggle with a lot. There's, you know, the notion that if they are hungry, they will go to the cafeteria just is not true. We have to make it as easy as possible and as convenient as possible for students to receive a breakfast. And we do this through grab-and-go kiosks and, you know, what, student entry points. We introduced a second grab-and-go cart at Fitchburg High School this year, and we saw those numbers at Fitchburg, our breakfast numbers at Fitchburg High skyrocketed, simply because we added an additional easy access point. Those numbers just simply don't lie. But there is a misconception that when a student arrives at school, given the option of maybe going to hang out with their friends, or go all the way down to the cafeteria if you're hungry, they're not going to do that. They're going to go play with their friends, and then in two hours, they're going to be starving because they didn't get breakfast. So if we had more access points, something that I'm constantly, you know, working with schools on adding, we wouldn't have hungry kids, and non-hungry kids learn better. And this is just more of a, what is best for students does need to be the driving force, force behind this. And it just seems like sometimes it's not always the case. You know, my goal is to, you know, make decisions for what's best for the students, and making sure they have easy access to breakfast is one of those things that I like to do. And I will continue to advocate for that, whether it's breakfast, lunch, snack dinner, other programs and, and things like that. And that's, that's all I have to say about breakfast. So. And I believe that is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Subject I'm passionate about.
David, you said they don't eat in the classroom anymore?
There are some schools that do. So, for example, South Street Early Learning Center is doing a very successful breakfast-in-the-classroom program this year. We do have, Memorial does allow students to pick up breakfast at carts, but we did have other schools where we did have some breakfast kiosks that I've been asked to stop them over concerns of students taking them to the classroom.
What's the reason for that?
What I'm told is, no food in the classroom because it attracts pests.
It's what?
Attracts pests. Yeah, there's plenty of other food in the classroom.
See, I go back many years.
Yeah.
And the food was delivered to every classroom.
Yes.
And the only rule I made for the, for the teachers, you know, that they chose the time when they ate.
Yep.
Between like 8:30 and 9:30, and sometimes they did it during morning meeting, or, but the teacher took their time when it was best for them in their each individual classroom. And it was very successful, and it was 100% of the kids had access to the food in their classroom.
If we make it easy and convenient for the students, they're going to eat it. If we don't, they're not gonna, and then they're going to be hungry, and they're not going to learn.
I just want to make sure no kid ever goes hungry. And I, I mean, and it was always a, I could always send a student to the cafeteria and say, "Didn't get a breakfast," and they were always fed.
Yeah, we, and we do that, we do that. So. My concern is the, the kids who are afraid to say something.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
This is, this is not customary, but, but I'm giving you a great deal of latitude here, if you will.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, New Year, boy.
Here, here. As a parent, and I love kids, let me tell you, here's what I have discovered talking to many people out here, is there's so many children out there, their only meal is the meal that they provide at the school. That's it. I've talked into cafeteria workers whose hands are tied and are able to only sneak an apple to some of these kids, so they have a meal to go home with. What about at the end of the day, they take those meals that are left over instead of saying, "No, I'm sorry, you can't have it, but I'm hungry and I need something for the weekend or the night." What about, can we bag them up and have these certain students, so the students will come into the office?
Is some sort of liability in that, Dave?
Is there?
It's going to be answered for this.
So that they can have that?
Yeah, there's a rule around that.
Some school-level programs where we do that. There is some liability that we get sign-offs for, but there are some school-level food pantries where we do gather the leftovers, and we work with the school.
Because there's even senior citizens out there, they're starving. There's so many people.
We, we work with the school parent liaisons to help identify the, the students without, without them incurring any stigma.
Right.
Because, right, the last thing we want to do is see if we go to waste.
Exactly.
And get it in the hands of the people who need it.
And these kids are asking for it, and they're being turned away and said, "I'm sorry, I can't give it to you," but sneaking an apple to them. And can we also get lacta, chocolate lactaid milk?
We are working on that. This, that chocolate, lactaid milk in general was a huge issue due to supply chain issues. Regular lactaid is back, hopefully chocolate will be back soon. Supply chain was a very real issue for us, but it's settling.
That's the only thing.
It's settling.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have district calendar update, looking at changing the early release day on March 29th to March 22nd. Mr. Thompson is going to talk about that.
Thank you Superintendent Jokla. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education came out with this year's MCAS calendar, and at the high school, they had, they have scheduled grade 10 ELA for March 28th and 29th. We have to take the test on that day at the high school, so I'm asking that we move the early release day scheduled for March 29th for parent-teacher conferences to March 22nd.
Okay.
That's all.
Pretty straightforward, yeah.
Okay. We have one more presentation tonight. Byron Woodman III of Select Energy is back again to talk about the carport installation project up at Fitchburg High School, and I'd like to get some concurrence from the school committee, so before I can go to the city council for them to vote on, because the city council is the contracting authority, not the school committee.
How do we, how do we verify that you are in fact the third? Very, very, very fishy.
I made it in there.
Are you really the third one?
I'm kidding.
I am the third. That's funny. Okay.
You never question Mr. Gall, he'll be.
I know. He's, he's the fourth. Where is he? He left.
He's out talking.
We have, the young man that was sitting there is the fourth.
He's at, at baseball practice, probably. Should I share my screen here?
It should be up now.
Try to unplug the.
I think it's coming up, he just hit a button there.
Sometimes it does that to me, too.
There you go.
I can, uh.
You want to try the?
Should I, should I start, or should I share from here?
Yeah, share from, from the one that you have on the Zoom presentation, and that might work.
All right, let me just see here. Okay, I can share from here.
There you go.
Excellent. Like this. There we go. Let's just see, there might be a delay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time this afternoon and evening. So I, I am back initially on, on the topic of Long Joe and the power purchase agreement there, and that, that project is advancing well. And I talked to the project manager today, and he said it's on the, the one yard line, they're waiting for, I guess, one more piece of equipment to be installed, and then, and then they'll be completing the inspection and, and moving for permission to operate. So happy to report that. Back in May, when we met and advanced with a letter of intent for the high school, our commitment was, the letter of intent was to evaluate and, and do feasibility on the parking canopy and for the high school, what would be permitted, what the next steps would be. We've been working diligently, so this presentation is sort of an update on the findings that we've, we've achieved so far. And then next steps with the city zoning board to, to make it a reality and, and move forward. So let me, so just the general overview, project update, and then a, a school committee vote to move to city council for approval. So the, getting right, right to the, you know, right to the essence of it, when we signed the letter of intent, the commitment was, and I'm not sure if you can read it, but, but the commitment was to achieve a power purchase rate of 16.3 cents. Having done our feasibility, having worked through the utility study, the feasibility, received the incentives from DOE-R, we're underneath that at 15.38 cents. And for the three canopies, it's actually two, two canopy regions, but three separate canopies that are all going to be fed and combined to provide about half of the high school's overall usage. Based on this, the savings has increased, we're at about $1.4 million, a little bit over that, over the 25-year term. And there's zero escalation rate on the power purchase agreement. So the price stays fixed for the next 25 years. And at a time when utility costs are going up, that's, that's significant. So we're really, we're really proud of that and be able to report back on those findings. So here's some of the specific action items which we, we completed. We signed the letter of intent, we submitted for the SMART awards, we received them, we submitted for the utility approval, and they requested a study. We submitted and paid for the study, we came back and we have the results from that, which are included in, in the economics here. We've done the feasibility. The schools were very accommodating in terms of letting our crew come out on the weekends and, and do their boreholes, their geotech studies. One of the aspects to the study is, just to mention it, is there is some ledge in some areas, so in that case, we'd use spread footings that just don't go quite as deep, but go a little bit wider. That gets built into the engineering of the, of the project as well, too. The initial engineering is, is complete at this time. So we're comfortable with the system size, we're comfortable with the location. There is zoning approval, which will be required prior to construction, and that's, that's one of the next steps. The, the agreements to advance will need city council approval. And, and based on, on sort of the, the path for Long Joe, city council looked for, obviously, the school committee's endorsement of this because it's, is to support the schools. So the recommendation from the school committee to city council, and then the vote from the city council to, to execute those agreements. In, in, not to go too deep on the details, but in the agreements, they're almost the exact same template that we worked with the city solicitor on the implementation for Long Joe. There are some specific aspects in the exhibits that apply to a rooftop project versus a canopy project. And so that, those changes or, or updates have been incorporated into the agreement as well, too.
Byron, the cost of installation is all yours, correct?
Everything, yep. The installation.
How about maintenance of it and whatnot is also?
Maintenance, yep. It's, it's all on us, and, and we actually maintain it. All the data is put into the internet and for real-time tracking. We've got a NOC center in Hopkinton where we have about 600 systems in the field that we're gathering data, and then we can deploy service workers to maintain, maintain those systems as necessary.
Who'd you work with the DOE-R?
It is.
Kelly Brown?
No, it's, it's through the Clear Results. So Clear Result is, is the primary group that we work with, a portal, and then they get their funding from DOE-R. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so then, then we'll install, right now, you know, all green lights, zoning, everything, the procurement. We'd like to mobilize to do either the foundations or the construction start this summer if we can. That could be an aggressive schedule, just in terms of getting the materials. Would like to do as much of it as we can during the summer months. There is a summer program at the high school as well, too, so coordinating around that. So as, as we advance, there's going to be a dovetailing between school operations, obviously. There are two different lots, so our hope would be to mobilize all at one time and have the crew there, but, but there may be flexibility if, if necessary on, on working the different sites for, for traffic, et cetera. And then, once, once they're installed, then again, we just, we operate them. And the city, just like we're doing for Long Stroll and Ryangold, you'd receive the bill for the electricity from us for the solar portion and from Unitel for the grid-tied portion. And that's, that's the concise, fairly concise overview.
With Long Joe, you said you're waiting for one piece of equipment, and the hope is that that would be operational by?
Yeah.
Next fall or?
No, no, this, hopefully within this quarter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your 1.4 million over 25 years, is that reviewed at certain timeframes, or is that locked for 25?
So, so the savings is based on the, the power purchase agreement rate versus the cost to compare from the utility. So it does assume a 2% escalator in, in overall utility costs. So it's the, the PPA rate which is locked in, and the savings is based on the finance, you know, the economic model and energy projections over the next 25 years.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, and on that note, just to, to discuss that a little bit, this is through the Power Options Program. So in, and they're the competitive supplier for the energy for the city. So as part of, of the analysis, we worked closely with Power Options in terms of the future. So as part of the analysis, we worked closely with Power Options in terms of the future modeling and the assumptions for energy costs.
Okay.
Yeah, similar to the programs that we did years ago at Rheingold and Memorial, and we've now.
Yeah.
Longstrow, Fitchburg Times.
Good. Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, Byron.
Yep.
Hang around for the vote, Byron III. I would have been the third.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go into the homestretch here with some budget items. We have some grants, donations, middle school boilerweld for the MSBA, and Jeremy has a few words to say about the electronic payment system, so.
Yeah, I have a 72-slide presentation on that.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
I do, I just.
He went through 55, so go ahead.
Very briefly, we met at Resource Subcommittee on December 13th, and we talked about the idea of adding the option of e-payment system to our students, families, and faculty. And essentially, what that is, is, you know, for events such as prom, or school play, or musical, or other types of events where a school store is selling items, currently, right, you know, there are, there are students and family members and faculty who would prefer to use credit card, they'd prefer to use some kind of e-payment. And in looking around at options, more and more folks are doing that. In fact, in looking at this a bit, only 25% of all sales in the United States, according to the Federal Reserve, so a pretty good source there, in 2020 were cash, were directly cash. So 25% in 2020, and that's declining every year. The estimation for 2024 is 80% of all commerce will be done with some kind of e-payment, you know, and that includes credit card, that includes other systems such as Venmo, you know, the sharing, sharing payment systems, and even, you know, the different wallets that you can get on your iPhone or Android device. So we'd like to look at offering an e-payment system in the 2023, 2024 school year. In this discussion, again, we looked at, you know, the various ways that that might produce opportunities for school stores and the various stores that might produce opportunities for alumni, for example, around Thanksgiving or the holidays, who would like to, you know, purchase a Fitchburg High sweatshirt or Goodrich Owl, something or other, or whatever school it might be. Right now, about 200 schools in Massachusetts do offer some kind of e-payment system, and the ones that we've been looking at also do integrate with Arbiter, which is the big one that the MIAA has athletic programs using. So in looking at just one site, Fitchburg High, there was about $60,000 of commerce last year between sort of the big events, whether that was AP fee exams, or school store sales, or the various types of activities, not including athletics. And in considering that, about $30,000 to $35,000 was done in cash. It was then onsite and has to be moved, you know, from various places, from, from the advisors, to the office, to a safe, to the bank. So in looking at companies such as My School Bucks, or Cheddar Up, or different ones that are out there, this would allow for, still the option for cash, because some people are comfortable with that, and that's fine, but also providing the opportunity for people who would like to do e-payment. So this is just a consideration of the school committee before moving to city auditor, city treasurer. Of course, we would do that to make sure that any system that we would do, if possible, would be as safe as possible and integrate appropriately with whatever the requirements are. So that's pretty much it. And again, we reviewed this at Resource in December and had a productive conversation about it. And I'm glad to ask, to answer any questions, if any of the members have any.
Thank you.
So I think otherwise, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Donations and grants.
Yeah, so at this point, we would then shift to some of the action items. So there were three action items for grants, and that would be action item 23-219, the Mass Cultural Society in the amount of $5,800. And the benefits are Star's residency grant at Rheingold Elementary School. We heard a little bit about this earlier, the Teacher Diversification Pilot Program in the amount of $95,078, which supports local school and district efforts to strengthen existing teacher recruitment and retention programs. And the Innovation Career Pathways Grant of $125,000, which, again, we also heard from Roy Nasamiento, supports innovation technical pathways programming at Fitchburg High School. Those are grants. Should we bundle the donations, or do you want to just take that one individually?
Make a motion, we bundle the donation.
Yeah.
Yes.
When you say to accept the following grants, have you, you've already applied for these and been told that you received them?
Yes.
Now it simply requires an acceptance of it, huh?
Right.
That's correct.
Right. Is the wishes of the committee to bundle?
Make a motion. Second the motion to bundle, 218 through 228.
Motion made and seconded to bundle action items 23-218 up through and including 23-228.
Mr. Me, I have another question.
Yes, Reynolds.
On 23-220, what do you mean by the school spirit activities, items related to school spirit activities?
Sure.
Which action are you referring to, man?
Number 22, dash 23, yeah, 220.
Yeah, so the class of 1997 reached out. Members of that class had, had collected funds that they would like to donate to ascending senior classes for the next 10 years in the amount of $2,000 per year to provide the opportunity for the senior classes to engage in activities that would promote spirit and unity and red raider pride. So it was great talking to Nicole Daly and other members of the class of 97, who are really excited about making a donation again. And this would be an annual donation for at least 10 years in the amount of $2,000 per year.
Great.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions? We have motion to bundle, once again, 23-218 up through and including 23-228. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous.
Make a motion to approve the bundle of 23-218 through 23-228.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you. No need for executive session at this time. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.